Good afternoon. The Committee on General Government Operations and Appropriation now reconvenes the public hearing from Thursday, yesterday, March 23, 2023, and is called back to order. Today is Friday, March 24, and the time now is 2:00 p.m. In compliance with the open government law, the notice for this public hearing was posted on the Guam Daily Post and disseminated via email to all senators and all main media broadcasting outlets on Wednesday, March 15, and Tuesday, and also the reconvene. The notice was announced and emailed on Thursday, March 23, 2023. Today we would have one appointment and three bills. When we get after the appointment, we're going to hear all three bills at the same time because they're all related to each other. Just one of them is 10 million, one is 15, and the other one is really 20 million. So after we're done with the appointment, we'll go right into the other three bills. But I'll announce what the bills are, but I'll first announce the referral of appointment of Christopher A. Cruz to serve as a member for the Guam Ethics Commission, to serve a term of four years, starting from July 11, 2022 to July 11, 2026. And then we'd have Bill Number 75 to 37 LS, introduced by myself, co-sponsored by Vice Speaker Tina Rose Munia Barnes, Senator Amanda Shelton, Senator Duane Siniklas, Senator Roy Canata, and Senator William Parkinson, an act to amend Section 2 of Chapter 1 and Section 2 of Part 1, Chapter 3, and add a new section, 13, to Chapter 11, all of public law, 36107, General Appropriation Act, relative to providing assistance for private business in their recovery from the economic effects of the COVID-19 pandemic through a program established by the Guam Economic Development Authority. And then the other bill that will be heard simultaneously is Bill 61 to 37 COR, introduced by Senator Frank Blas Jr., an act to appropriate $50 million from the excess general fund revenues reported in January 2023, consolidated revenue expenditure report to the Department Administration for an extension of the local employers' assistance program to assist businesses that continue to struggle with the devastating economic impact brought on by the COVID-19 pandemic and compounded by inflation. And finally, it'll be Bill 59 to 37 COR, introduced by Senator Chris Barnett, co-sponsored by Senator Sabina Perez, Senator Ted O'Taidy, Senator Joan Brown, Senator Chris Wainan, Senator Tom Fisher, and Senator Jesse Luan, an act to appropriate the sum of $10 million from the general fund to the department administration relative to protecting the jobs of private sector employees while the tourism industry rebounds by extending the benefits of the local employer's assistance program as initially funded by public law 36 to 65. That being all said, we will now begin with the referral of the appointment of Christopher Cruz and Mr. Kanga. And Mr. Cruz, please come forward, and if anybody else would like to testify on his behalf, hopefully not against the gentleman, please have a seat, and then we will begin. We'll start with Mr. Kanga because you're the director of the Ethics Commission, so we're going to blame everything on you anyway. All right? Mr. Kanga, sir.
All right. Sisus Massey, Mr. Chair. Guam Hucy Jesse.
I forgot. I have to read the rules of engagement, just in case anybody gets out of hand. The conduct of the public hearing shall be as follows. Written testimony shall be submitted to the committee. Please provide my legislative staff with written testimony for photocopying. Testimony may be read, and empty testimony should be summarized to about five minutes. But as we move along in all the bills, we'll allow additional time as needed. Those testifying will be allowed to present oral testimony. Once you are done, please remain in the room for questions or for additional testimony as may be desired by the members of the committee. Questioned testimony shall be confined to the substance or nature of the agenda. Personal inference as to the character or the motive of any senator or any individual's testifying is not permitted. Any violation of this general rule of conduct will result in removal from the public hearing. Proper form and decorum shall be practiced by all present in the public hearing room for this proceedings. Individuals who fail to maintain proper form and decorum will be restricted from providing oral testimony and will be escorted from the room. When you speak, please make sure that the microphone is on and that you speak into the microphone. Please state your name, your title for the record. I'd like to acknowledge my colleagues that have joined me. We'll begin with Senator Roy Canata, Senator Darrell Barnett, and Senator Frank Blas. And we will now begin with the opening with Mr. Kanga. Ma'am, sir.
Sisus Massey, Mr. Chair. Guam Hucy Jesse Kanga, Director of the Commission Ginihan Areklementon Guam. Buenos to Senator Canata, Senator Barnett, Senator Blas. Palagudzu na byun kuentus giffino tomorrow, sa mes tomorrow, Pago na dia. Lo mas nervoso, sa Guanabaya, lazio, usa giffino tomorrow. Byun taita esina pape giffino English. Hoffiday, Senator Chairman Joe Sinogstin and members of the committee. It is with great admiration and esteem that I write to express my unequivocal support for Christopher A. Cruz's reappointment as a member of the Guam Ethics Commission. His insight, intelligence, and commitment make him an ideal candidate worthy of confirmation for a second term on this esteemed commission. As a commissioner, he played an integral role in the developing and executing of the commission's mission. He also observed and served on the committee's search for the executive director, increased ethics training availability government-wide, and initiated the process of receiving complaints of official misconduct. Commissioner Cruz further supported the formulation of the commission's public policy initiatives, which led to the enactment of two new public laws. These include mandating ethics training for all employees of the government of Guam, Public Law 3625 authored by Senator Sabina Perez, and reaffirming the Guam Ethics Commission as an independent and autonomous agency within the government of Guam, which is Public Law 3628 authored by Chairman Sinogstin. Recently, at the commission's January meeting, Commissioner Cruz was elected among his peers to serve as a chairman, to lead the commission. He is a committed, passionate, and accomplished individual. Furthermore, Chairman Cruz has dedicated himself to the service of our community through his work with the Rotary Club of Pago Bay, Guam, as past president and current treasurer, and he also serves on the parish council for Our Lady of Peace and Safe Journey Catholic Church in Chalampago. His commitment to improving our local community is noteworthy and commendable. In short, Commissioner Cruz has brought tremendous value to the commission and is an essential part to its future. His background and voice will continue to support a balanced and fair deliberation of all complaints heard by the commission. His experience and commitment to public integrity are the reason why he should continue his service on the commission. I have no doubt that Christopher A. Cruz will continue to serve with great distinction as a member of the Guam Ethics Commission, and I respectfully ask for the legislature's confirmation of his reappointment. Sisus Massey, Jesse Kanga.
Thank you, Mr. Kanga. Mr. Cruz, if you can present testimony on your behalf.
Good afternoon, senators. Good afternoon, Mr. Chair. Thank you for having me today. I don't know how to follow that speech by our director here, but all I can say is that I certainly am motivated to continue to serve on the Guam Ethics Commission. I was part of the group that really resurrected the Ethics Commission, as you may be well aware of, right? And we literally started from nothing, right? And we had to petition you for some money. We had to hire our director. We had to find some space. We just literally had to create the commission, right? So I was very, very, I'm very proud at this moment to say that we do have a commission. We are hearing complaints, and we are adjudicating them, and we are moving our mission forward. Our goals for training are there. We have an online platform available for GovGuam employees to go to and get that training, for example, and those are just some of the things that we've been doing, right, as a commission. So if I may, I'm not sure what you'd like for me, but I can tell you that I'm happily married to my wife, Anna Alicia, who's here with me today. We raise, we're raising two beautiful children in the village of Chalampago, and our daughter Ariana is 15, going to the academy, and our son Christopher is 12, going to St. Anthony. So I'm a banker by day. I work for the Bank of Guam. I'm a relationship manager. If you ask me what my field or trade would be in banking, it certainly would be lending. And that's brought, for me, a tremendous perspective to being fair and impartial in my duty as an ethics commissioner, right? So I'm able to take what I already do as in my career as a banker, as a lender, and continue to be fair and impartial when I do hear ethics complaints, for example, and be able to apply that properly. So again, with your permission, I will continue my term as commissioner with the Guam Ethics Commission.
Thank you, Mr. Cruz. I'd like to also recognize colleague have joined us, Senator Tom Fisher. Mr. Cruz, I'm the first one to thank you for wanting to stay on the Ethics Commission because, you know, you started with the commission, from nothing to something, and hopefully during the process of what you guys are doing, we'll be able to identify if there's any wrongdoing. Do what you're supposed to do. That's what we asked for. Do what's right. Don't take the easy way out. Just do what's right. And I'm happy you introduced your wife. Por favor, that's the most ethical thing to do. Recognize your family because those are, that's your backbone. That's the one that actually tells you to stay calm, do what's right, and you'll be okay. Because you still have to go home and look at her, and she'll look at you and says, did you do what's right? And if you say yes, then she'll be happy, and you'll have a happy life. Moving along, Senator Roy, do you have anything you want to ask on post to the nominee?
No, I just wanted to congratulate you on your reappointment. I'm sure that you've helped pave the road for a lot of ethics investigation, and being that your executive director very much supports your endeavors to continue on with the board, that means that you're doing some good work, and you've helped pave the road for a great agency that's, you know, doing a lot of great work as well. And again, special thanks to the families that support you, most especially your wife. That's good that she wants you to be reappointed, and she's here to support you. Because if your wife doesn't support you, then probably you shouldn't take the reappointment, right? But I have no questions for you. I wish you all the best and keep up the good work and keep our people accountable for all their actions.
Thank you, Senator Barnett, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Cruz, if you could just explain what your, a little bit about what your responsibilities are in terms of, relative to any government employee?
My, I'm sorry, Senator.
What are your responsibilities in the position that you're being appointed to, relative to oversight of government employees, et cetera?
Okay. Well, I, I hear complaints that come in from, you know, that are speaking on, you know, against government employees, for example. My roles would be to ensure that we adjudicate that as best we can in a timely manner, right, and be able to issue either an opinion or a referral to the proper authorities following that, that, that process.
Could you tell me what entities or individuals in the government of Guam fall under your jurisdiction, so to speak?
I believe every government agency, and I believe the legislature has its separate ethics body, for example, but I believe every government agency falls under our purview, Senator.
Including the...
Maybe our director can maybe further clarify that for, for me?
Yes. Thank you, Senator Barnett. So the Ethics Commission has purview over all government of Guam officials, excluding judicial officers. They have their own process, but there is a statute within our enabling act that allows for concurrent jurisdiction. That means in addition to the Legislative Ethics Committee, the Guam Ethics Commission can also adjudicate ethics complaints against members of the legislature.
Thank, thank you for that. I would just ask the obvious, I mean, it's a question that's obvious for me. I'm looking at your statement of financial interests here. Do you believe that your 3,451 shares in the Bank of Guam pose any conflict of interest or ethical conflict in that you are also, or you also have oversight of the office of the governor, given the governor's relationship with the Bank of Guam?
No, Senator, I don't believe that my, my shares, my ownership in Bank of Guam pose any conflict to the fact that the governor of Guam has a relationship with Bank of Guam. I don't believe so.
How would you respond to someone who maybe would disagree with that statement?
I, you know, I, I would just clarify that my interest in the bank was, you know, it's, it's separate from, I guess, my feelings and understanding of what I need to do at the end of the day, and I'm able to, to keep that together and be able to be fair and impartial and be able to more or less kind of, I don't know what you call it, maybe separate it and be able to keep that different, if you may. I, I don't know how else to expand on that if somebody were to ask me, for example, right, which, which you have, but I, I don't see any issues with, with that.
Are you also employed at the bank, sir?
Yes, yes, I am. I'm employed with Bank of Guam. That's correct.
And you don't believe there's any ethical conflict, but what would happen in the event that someone was to make an ethical complaint against, you know, the governor or any, what's the process?
I think at that point, I, I would recuse myself from any type of discussion proceedings or whatnot.
What are the, because you guys do ethics courses and stuff, and in a situation like this, Mr. Executive Director, what would the, the, the literature, the protocol from the Ethics Commission dictate?
Thank you for that question, Senator. So when a case is filed before the commission, it's presented first by the parties involved. The commissioners would review the parties involved and would make a determination, an individual assessment, if a conflict might arise from that. They have to state plainly on the record that a conflict exists and then remove themselves from the entire process. So there are enough members within the body to still continue with the adjudication of complaints, so in that particular scenario, Commissioner Cruz wouldn't have any specific conflict for any cases filed against a person who may have the appearance of influence.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chair, just, just last question. So the, again, if you could just refresh my memory, in the event that someone had entered a complaint against the governor, an ethical complaint, you know, let's say relative to not allowing the public or, you know, senators to review, like a lease entered into with the federal government of that, and that complaint came your way, would you have to recuse yourself, or are you, are you still maintaining that, given the governor's interest in the Bank of Guam and your interest in the Bank of Guam and your employment with the Bank of Guam, that there are absolutely no conflicts ethically, sir?
So Senator Barnett, again, to reiterate, when the case is presented, we simply state the parties involved before any evidence or information about the case is shared. So the respective commissioners have to disclose their conflict and are excluded out of the process right off the bat. That's to protect the integrity of the investigation and the subsequent decision that's rendered by the remaining members.
Thank you. Thank you. I appreciate your willingness to serve in this capacity. I mean, Lord knows Guam's such a small island, where there's so many lines that, that we cross, you know, and so many relationships that we have that sometimes pose difficult circumstances to each, each and all of us. So again, I just, your, I guess, statement on the record that there, no conflict exists and that you're all good.
That's correct, Senator.
Thank, thank you, sir. Good luck. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Senator Barnett. Senator Blas, do you have any question for the nominee?
First off, thank you very much, Mr. Chair, and, you know, Mr. Cruz, and, okay, Mr. Kanga, thank you very much for, for being here. You know, you got a lot going for you. First off, when that guy sits right next to you, you know, I mean, with all the confidence and everything, you know, that's, that's one, okay? Secondly, when you have your wife with you, okay, you know, in support of you, I, I need to, okay, don't, don't mind me. Ma'am, are you sure you want him to sit here? Okay, just got that one. So that you got, you got the second one. Okay, the third one, you know, I found that very interesting on page two. You had alumni father duane's fortis and feed a brother, okay?
Biba, Senator, Biba.
Yeah, Biba, okay. But, you know, and I appreciate the questions that was asked by, by Senator Barnett. They actually took it away from me, so I don't have to say too much, you know, more about that. You've got a very impressive background too as well, and I appreciate this, and I think that the only question that I have is quite honestly, are you ready to serve?
I'm ready, Senator. I'm ready.
All right. Congratulations. Thank you very much for continuing to honor, sir. Okay? And that's all I got, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Senator Blas. Senator Fisher, you have any question for the nominee?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I don't have a question, just congratulations and I wish you well. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator Fisher. That being said, and there's no other individuals to testify for or against you, the committee will continue to receive testimony referenced to your appointment, Mr. Cruz, and will continue for a few days, and then after that, or I ask that they submit the testimony to the mayor room of the Guam Legislature or through email at Senator Joe S. Sinogstin at gmail.com. And again, I want to thank you, and thank everyone. Cruz, to serve as a member of the Guam Ethics Commission for the term of four years, beginning on July 11, 2022 to July 11, 2023, is duly heard by the committee, and the public hearing is now adjourned. The time now is 2:21. Sisus Massey, thank you, Mr. Kanga and Mr. Cruz.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, senators.
Now, just wait for the sign-in sheet, but so that everybody's reminded, we're going to hear all three bills simultaneously, and the reason for that is because all three bills are related to each other. They're all pretty much the same. One is 10, one is 15, one is technically 20 million, and we just put it all together and we'll just work it.
How many of you want to pay your people $15 now?
We'll just go ahead and go and recess until I get the sign-in, and then we'll have everyone line up. All right? Thank you. Good afternoon, folks. We're, the committee's called back to order. I'd ask now for the following individuals to please come forward and have a seat. We have Suzanne Perez. We have Ed Camacho from GPO. He's here, Suzanne. Did you want to testify or no? I know you're in support of it, but do you want to testify? Sure, then come on up and have a seat, and then I'm, as I call your name, please, sit at one end, and then everybody lines up so we know what direction. We have Mr. Ed Camacho from GIDA. We have Richard Ham, Hon?
Hart.
Hart? Richard Hart, okay. I mean, the way he wrote names look like ham. Must be from IHOP, but anyway. We have Catherine Castro. Kathy, Kathy coming up from Guam Chamber. We have Dave Tadinko coming up, sir. We just line up everybody in order, and we have John Ray Ugon, sir. No, no. Okay, let me get the next list, so I, just one more, we have one more on the list. Joe, one more on the list, just so I can fill the table. Okay, no, this one, this one. Steve Casperbauer, that's it. No, Bill, Bill, no. No, 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 first one is Bill, that's what I'm getting. Okay, we have a Bill, Bill Not from Guam Travel and Tourism Association, sir. Bill, have a seat there. Just looking if we have any more chairs. And then in the next group, we'll begin with Steve Casperbauer, Jeffrey Pastones, I guess, and then Judeus. Okay, but we'll, we'll start with this group, and remember, I'd like to also recognize that my colleague, Speaker Tali, has joined us also, but we're hearing all three bills at the same time. So whatever you testify on, it'll be attached to all three bills committee's report, okay? They're all in favor of, they're all in support of, providing some support. So I begin with Ms. Perez. Ma'am, you're first, and then Ed will follow, and just go down the line, okay? And if you have any written testimony that you haven't provided, just hand a copy to the staff so that everyone will, can follow along as you're reading your testimony. All right? Thank you. Ms. Perez?
Thank you very much. Hoffiday, Mr. Chairman and members of the Guam Legislature, I am Suzanne Perez, the shopping center manager for the Guam Premier Outlets. Before I begin my testimony in support of the three bills being heard today, I must disclose that as a landlord for GPO and Tumansans Plaza, we are not eligible for any federal grants or local government assistance like the Local Employers Assistance Program, or LEAP. I am here today to advocate for our local tenants who are still facing financial challenges due to the lack of tourists from Japan and Korea, mainly. They will continue to struggle until such time arrivals get closer to our 2019 numbers. Last year, close to 20 of our local tenants applied for the LEAP program. They were relieved when their applications were approved. This money helped cover expenses such as payroll, utilities, and rent. Without the LEAP funding, some of those tenants may have not survived. Although we are seeing an increase in our visitor arrivals, our local tenants are still down against their 2019 sales, some as low as 50% down. Our island has lost many businesses due to COVID. We can't afford to lose more. This second LEAP funding is vital for our small businesses to stay afloat and remain open to continue to employ their staff, service our community, and pay their taxes. I thank the Guam Legislature, GIDA, the Governor and Lieutenant Governor of Guam for working together to help our small businesses in their time of need. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Perez. Ed?
Good afternoon, Speaker, senators. My name is Ed Camacho, Business and Economic Development Manager for the Guam Economic Development Authority. Thank you for giving GIDA an opportunity to testify on these bills. Hoffiday, Senators Sinogstin and members of the Committee on General Government Operations and Appropriations, and thank you for the opportunity to provide testimonies on Bill 59, 61, and 75. The Guam Economic Development Authority supports the intent of all three bills and appreciates the bill's sponsors for taking action to provide another round of direct financial assistance to our small business community. As we all know, COVID-19 pandemic has presented a fair amount of challenges to our economy. In response, Governor Lou Leon-Garo in consultation with GIDA established several small business programs that provided much-needed direct financial assistance to the small business community. These funds provided an infusion of capital to help businesses stay open and, most importantly, keep people employed. The most recent program, called the Local Employer Assistance Program, LEAP, was funded by both the American Rescue Plan and local funds appropriation by the 36 Guam Legislature. GIDA is confident that Guam's economy is on a path to recovery. Businesses are open, and all prior ordinances and policies regulating business activities with regards to the Guam pandemic response have been lifted. response had been lifted. Business privilege tax collections are robust, which is an indication, an indicator of high levels of consumer activity for products and services. Visitor arrivals, although still well below, uh, pre-pandemic levels, is trending upward and encouraging signs of more swift, uh, improvement as, as the year progresses. There's a renewed interest in both international and local investment in our economy, and we see a burgeoning entrepreneurial spirit within our people to open their own small businesses. That being said, we acknowledge that there are still sectors of our economy that are experiencing higher levels of business interruption. GIDA over the last several months has been in contact with several sectors of our small, of our business community who have expressed their need for another round of financial assistance. The reason for needing more assistance generally boils down to the continued lull in tourism and the impact inflation has had on, on the cost of doing business. Because of this, GIDA supports the intent of all three bills to appropriate local funding to support businesses that continue to experience significant challenges as a result of the COVID-19 pandemic. Since all three bills primarily propose to primary purposes appropriate funding for either the LEAP or a new small business program, one combined testimony has been prepared for all bills for the committee's consideration. Bill 59 seeks to provide $10 million from the general fund surplus revenue to extend the benefits of LEAP with the goal of protecting private sector jobs while Guam's tourism industry rebounds from COVID-19 pandemic. GIDA is unclear of the intent of the language regarding the extension of the benefits of LEAP. The application period for LEAP opened in December 21 and was originally open, to be open for ninety days, a ninety-day period. As such, the real original LEAP has established, is established, is essentially dead. An extension of LEAP benefits could mean many things such as reopening the application period for new applicants only or providing additional funding to existing LEAP recipients or a combination of both, among others. Because of this uncertainty, GIDA recommends not tying this new funding directly to LEAP as established in 2021. It would be beneficial to have more general language so that GIDA, in conjunction with input from the administration and stakeholders, can establish a program that maximizes the use of the resources. Like Bill 59, Bill 61-37 seeks to appropriate monies from the general fund to provide an extension of LEAP. GIDA appreciates the increased appropriation amount of $15 million in excess, in excess revenue, but shares the same concern as Bill 59 with regards to the similar language contained in the bill regarding an extension of LEAP. GIDA also appreciates that the bill references the impact of the high levels of sustained inflation have had on our local businesses. With further research, with further research needs, while further research needs to be done to ascertain more quantifiable data on the impacts of inflation on our local businesses, GIDA is taking into account the potential impact inflation has had on businesses in our, in our initial discussion regarding the formation of a new small business assistance program. GIDA's goal with all past and future small businesses assistance programs is to rely on quantifiable data, quantifiable data to ensure equal footing to all potential applicants. Bill 57-37 seeks to amend the General Appropriations Act of 2023 to appropriate $15 million for the establishment of a new COVID-19 business assistance program. Unlike Bills 59 and 61, Bill 75 provides more flexibility for GIDA to draft a new assistance program. GIDA prefers the broad language provided in Bill 75, especially concerning the fact that the parameters of LEAP were established in consideration of an appropriated budget much larger than any of the three bills seek to appropriate. Bill 75 gives GIDA the ability to more effectively work with the administration and key stakeholders to establish a program that most effectively uses the financial resources to be allocated. This will ensure that the, that the eventual program is optimized to assist as many businesses as possible. Governor Lulian Gero, in her State of the Island address, expressed her intention to, to provide additional support to our local small businesses. GIDA stands ready to work with the administration, the legislature, and the business community in the establishment of a new program to assist businesses that continue to experience the most impact from COVID-19 pandemic. GIDA thanks, thanks again to the sponsors of all three bills for the support of the small business and of the small business community and looks forward to continued dialogue and progress on this important matter. Should you have any questions, you can call Mel Meniola at GIDA at 6474332 or myself, Ed Camacho. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ed. Rich? You're next.
Sorry. Good afternoon, Senators and Mr. Speaker. We thank you for your time today. My name is Richard Hart, I am the franchise partner for Longhorn Steakhouse, Pology Pizzeria, Applebee's, Olive Garden, and IHOP here on Guam. We operate a total of seven locations and currently employ 227 team members across all our brands as well as 21 salaried personnel. Before we get into the specifics of our situation we are all here for, I wanted to take a moment to thank you for the overwhelming success of the first LEAP program. This saved several of our businesses from ceasing operations and more importantly, gave us the ability to sustain employment for more than 150 team members we employed at that time. As well, we were able to reopen our IHOP location in Pleasure Island, which has been closed since March 17 of 2020, after a two-year hiatus. Without LEAP, this would certainly not have been possible. We are all aware that Guam is now in the endemic phase of dealing with COVID. However, the last three years have been very long and painful and left us with many scars to deal with, some of which continue to grow. The end of the pandemic has brought on unprecedented inflation in America, the likes we have not seen in over forty years. This coupled with massive increases in power, water, and fuel, it has made for a very challenging environment for any business and most especially for restaurants and food service operations. If I may take a few moments to help understand the nature of what I am trying to describe, as saying things are just more expensive now does not begin to detail this out. We have seen cost increases as much as 200% in certain places. They can happen at any time and prices stay inflated for a very long time. That is, if they have ever returned to pre-pandemic levels. A few comparisons I may give. In July of 2022, a pound of bacon would cost $3.11. Today, it's $4.83, an increase of 36.63%. Whole chicken, July of 2022, is 79 cents a pound, today is $1.48, an increase of 87%. Ribeye meat in July of 2022 is $13.51 a pound, today is $15.49, an increase of 17%. We all know the story on eggs, if you've had to go to the store anytime recently, where we've seen a nearly 120% increase in the last sixty days for no verifiable reason at all, and the expectation is that this is going to continue into the summer. And it is not just food that hasn't, that inflation has hit. It is across the board on supplies and utilities, things that are just as vital to our operations as food. Liquid soybean oil, one of the most common ingredients in any restaurant, in July of 2022 was $34.79 for a 35-pound container, today is $62.60, an increase of nearly 80%. Plastic gloves is required by Guam Public Health Law, another very high-use item in any restaurant. July of 2022 at $23.78 a case, today is $44.29, an increase of 86%. And power, in July of 2022, 40,658 kilowatt-hours would have cost $13,124.39. Today, that very same usage costs $16,071.53, an increase of 22.46%. I can give hundreds example, of examples like these ones, but I think we all understand the value of our dollar is a little less today than it was just one year ago. The simple answer is to just raise prices. We have done this in all of our properties, some of them multiple times in the last year, but you can only charge so much for goods and services before people stop coming due to the expense of it. On top of that, the main reason we cannot raise prices is the rising, so effectively, is the rising cost has happened too fast to keep up with. In December of 2022, we saw produce prices in Guam increase by as much as 250% overnight due to conditions outside of our control. These maintained for about six weeks and now have returned to relatively normal levels, but we cannot recover what was lost during that period. Now, we are aware that the federal government has been taking aggressive steps towards taming inflation and it has shown in certain areas, even with another interest rate hike as early as yesterday morning. However, we have an extra layer of challenge here in Guam, and that is our geographical location. When inflation started to become a serious problem, so did the price of fuel, and that brought on a spike in shipping costs to Guam like we have not seen in recent times. This is something that affects the cost of everything on Guam, from household goods, food, clothing, fuel, and any other items that arrive here by ocean. These costs have yet to be reduced or relieved, so we have an extra layer of inflationary action here that people in the US mainland do not have. As stated, the last three years have been very enduring for any business. In March of 2020, we were asked to close our businesses to protect the community. At that time, my company operated 19,000 square feet of customer seating space, compiling of more than 1,000 seats that became unusable overnight. We lost more than $8 million in revenue from 2020 to 2021, which represented 56% of our overall gross sales, and no business is prepared to sustain that. We did our part and fought through COVID with takeout specials, price to move inventory, and to keep our team members we have invested in working to sell whatever we could out of our spaces. We fought to stay alive, we kept moving forward with every turn of events, and we spent more than eighteen months under some type of operational restriction, and we are still here trying to get things turned in the right direction. We are not in an all-is-lost situation, though, we are seeing improvements on a semi-steady basis to tourism. Although it is only at 20%, it is growing. United has announced dozens of new flights resuming to all major cities in Japan before summer, and these are all good signs. Only, we still, we are still recovering from a very long three-year period in which we saw unprecedented challenges. During this time, most of, most businesses on Guam had to take on new debt to stay alive through EIDL funding or other methods, and it is very difficult to start repaying this burden without Guam being fully recovered. Throughout all of it, we have continued to employ people, we continue to offer services to the community, and we are seeking some assistance from the government to help with this last bridge into the summer where we can feel the real full, full recovery finally begin. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you, Rich. Ms. Kathy?
Hafiday, Senators San Augustine and members of the committee. My name is Catherine Castro, and I'm the President of the Guam Chamber of Commerce. On behalf of the chamber, we appreciate the opportunity to comment on these three bills that seek to support our hospitality industry by allocating funds to extend the Local Employer Assistance Program, initially funded by Public Law 3665. For decades, tourism has been a key economic driver for our island, which has been made more alluring through the unique visitor experiences provided by our various cultural and island attractions run by our local businesses. As Guam continues efforts to diversify its economy, we recognize that tourism will always be a key financial pillar. Although we are past the health emergency the COVID-19 pandemic has wrought upon our world, our island still reels from its economic devastation, and recovery continues to be slow for our tourism, food and beverage, and recreation sectors. Visitors from our source markets are not rebounding fast enough to sustain the industry and the various sectors that support our visitor experiences. We appreciate the support the government of Guam has provided, especially with funding for the Local Employer Assistance Program. However, our local companies still need help. We have seen many beloved businesses close over the past three years. Some companies remain open but offer limited services. Other companies have opened, are open, but are hanging by a thread. These businesses include hotels, restaurants, entities providing attractions and services, transportation companies, wholesale distributors, and more. According to GVB's February 2023 Industry Update, February 2023 arrivals are 41% of February 2019 arrivals, which paint a strong picture that there is still a lengthy recovery period yet to go for our tourism sector. Federal pandemic stimulus funds have been extremely helpful in keeping private industry doors open. The federal government's Department of Defense investment in Guam has been a lifeline for our community, keeping our economy above water. As tourism numbers slowly rebound, we need to protect the businesses that support our hospitality industry. It is important for the government to provide additional financial support to aid our local companies tied to the hospitality industry. This support will help these companies survive and prepare our island, our product, to welcome our visitors. Your efforts would help to save this sector of our economy and preserve the livelihood of its survival until tourism numbers are back to pre-pandemic levels. We commend the authors of each of the three bills and their cosponsors for championing the industry that provided over 60% of our island's GDP for many years. We thank you for your consideration and urge your action to save our food and beverage, travel and tourism, recreation, and supporting businesses that provide good jobs and benefits for our island residents. Sisus Maussi.
Thank you, Ms. Castro. Dave? Sir?
Hafiday, Mr. Chairman, members of the legislature. Biba Mess tomorrow?
Biba!
Biba!
On behalf of our, our team members at the Valley of the Laddie, to my, to my right is Senor John Algonkaretan Karabao. Uh, here to testify as well is Bo Maniebu, who's with Grill Sergeant. And one of my other members was here, but he was feeling ill, so he left. Tony Mantononia, our master hot nu maker. We want to extend a Danklunas Jesus Maussi for the support you have given to businesses who have been working really hard to continue to overcome the financial hardships brought on by the pandemic. We are here to testify in support of the three bills introduced to provide a financial bridge for businesses that continue to struggle as we await the return of our tourism market. It has been exactly three years and four days, that was March 2020, 20, since Guam closed its borders to safeguard our families from the devastation brought on by COVID. As a community, we have overcome significant obstacles to keep our island safe and equally important, keep our team members gainfully employed as we work towards recovering our economy. Businesses that have relied heavily on tourism have been hit the hardest. I would safely say that we would not be here today testifying before you if it were not, if it were not for the help that the government of Guam, as well as the federal government provided in the past through the COVID-related grant and loan programs administered by the Guam Economic Development Authority. The Local Employer Assistance Program passed last year provided a critical lifeline to many of us who are part of the attractions and services infrastructure, delivering a great experience for our guests coming to Guam. We are now seeing signs of recovery in our Korea market, but Japan has just recently extended its domestic travel incentive for its citizens to stay home through the summer. A financial bridge is needed to help get companies to the finish line and continue to provide a great Guam experience. The Guam Economic Development Authority has provided exceptional leadership in developing, implementing, and administering financial assistance programs for qualified businesses. We would like to request that GIDA be given the flexibility to design the program that these bills intend to fund. Huagodesi iadjudnmidzu para itautauta, sijus maussi.
Thank you, Dave. Mr. Ogun, sir? Now, now, onfin, zemi? Zemini, but finish? Okay, good.
Oh, this is, what is for? Hoy jan hafaday. Nanu si John Raymond Appti Ogun, ta tota la vupu. Uh, danklunas sijus maussi, na in pometizu para vuputigini, da vus testigu. Por estigu nagogo, mommy, ni aman dikikina business, dikikina business, te dankulu dikikik. Ni man masasopit pauguna tempo. Lu pue, banaai danklunana agradismentu, igubetnu. Hamzuni senadot, nimu pasa jili program, nimapunasakun. Dankulu na zuduzu. Emala da vusengonyamzu, hafa, ugogo pinsegu. Hasu itautautanu. Hasu iman masasopitna tauta, tanu. Angin hafapindi CD, hasu itautautanu. Mege na minasopit, wow, uno. Si Dave, ti sinia na yu, maas pu apasu. Ta guia nea papasu gi. Ti sinuebi nasakun. Sangina na yu, maas, mege otsu man matsuut. Lu estau otsunu, usungun, itsinatsaga. Stabo papasi, power, gigima ileyu. Sasu masagogi, tresentusa. Paugu, nuebisentus, japarewa, napectus muutu. Ja pareua na pectus muuse power. Pa gui businesszu staba hundred thousand liability insurance for my Carabao. Hundred thousand. Pa gui they won one million dollars. My Carabao has a one million dollar liability insurance. It went from a hundred and fifty to five hundred dollars because that's what it takes for me. Pa bu la la mona. Malaguna bu para yes Dave, estou otsunu. Swetii angin guaha la apasu meet gi mes. Thousand dollars a month doesn't go a long way. Swetii angin guaha la apasu. Lu hasan, destak para dos onius. Ja pa bususunguna. Malakna bu para the. Lu hafane na pa bu para. Ochotogisti purikuturata. Ochotogisti para itautauta. Niga korentai otsu na pamaguun man motu man maudei Karabao. Ampuma roku man maudei mona di pamaguun. Anocho gi itsa moravilis guan onana ya di bat dipu man maudei. So tungu na man masasopit roki. Guan tautauta lakna tada gua sa we don't have enough money. Get on the Carabao and ride it for free. I know their suffering. Lu gogogo hamzun hasufen estisia ingagogo. Sa azuduha in papasin para itautauta mami. Guau na ampiliao sa ti sinia u apasi otsu na ampiliao. Na business gua tinahung apasu. Lu swetina gua azudu gi familia gama. You know? Estina chinena o chilugin in Arizona pumahan estina chinena o. San mono pakemwai ti unatilungza ni hafa swedoku. Edzo gogogo gi za hamzun na senadot. Hasufen sa pai itautauta estina ingagogo itautautanu. Oi ti pai business mami. Ra gua sinu otsu businesszu agupa. Pa gu, ja bu para. Lu ta hasu uhasu roki itautautanu. Danklunas Sizus Maussi. Biba tomorrow.
Biba!
Biba, Ms. Tomorrow.
Biba!
Biba tautautanu.
Biba!
Sizus Maussi.
Biba!
Thank you. Bill, you're up.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, honorable members of the legislature. My name is Bill Nault. I grew up in Guam. My heritage is Japanese, but Guam is my home. My company, Nault Head Guam, is a general sales agent for Rakuten, a leading online travel agency in Japan. Today, I am here representing the Guam Tourism and Travel Association, which I am the vice president. The GTTA is pleased and appreciates that three bills designed to extend the extension of our Local Employers Assistance Program, the LEAP, on behalf of the local small businesses in our community have been introduced. We also are confident that the Guam Economic Development Authority, GIDA, will be able to design program regulations to ensure that the proposed extensions will be as effective as the initial LEAP program. Our understanding is that GIDA is considering making the program flexible and expanding the types of expenditures that participating businesses will be able to make. The cooperation between the administration and the legislature to bring critically needed assistance to revive our tourism industry could not happen at a more important time. The pandemic caused about twenty-five percent of our tourism-related businesses in Guam to close their doors. That means that Guam's ability to satisfy visitors coming from Asia was diminished by twenty-five percent over what was available in 2019. It also means that the ability of the government to generate revenue from this sector was also diminished by twenty-five percent. As we continue to grapple with the ongoing effects of the pandemic, our local small businesses continue to struggle to keep their doors open and pay their employees and keep their operations afloat. The truth is, is that the tourism sector is lagging significantly behind what was experienced before the pandemic. While there have been optimistic statements about the rebound, it must be recognized that Korean travel to Guam is down by sixty percent over what it was in 2019, and the Japanese arrivals are off by more than ninety-five percent. Travel industry representatives in Japan and Korea all expect demand to travel to Guam will rebound, so as long as we have a product that remains competitive. Our ability to rebuild Guam's travel experience to what it was will determine how quickly and completely we can recover. It is to the point that I wish to draw the attention, the loss of twenty-five percent of our tourism businesses has had three dramatic effects, dramatic effects. The fact is, is that there are attractions, restaurants, and travel services and other businesses that are no longer available. This means that the impressions Guam can create is less than the product we offered in 2019. Our ability to market Guam as a competitive destination is diminished, and that will impact the impression that creates when visitors return. The impressions will further slow our rebound. Secondly, the capacity of the businesses that have survived are struggling because they are understaffed to meet the growth that should occur. Businesses face rising wage demands and continuing competition with other sectors for workers. Our ability to provide and experience the market expects has been hobbled because we are struggling to keep and attract the staffing needed to regain the level of service that characterized Guam as an outstanding destination. Thirdly, that is, the diminishment of the tourism sector is diminishing the interest of our young people to seek careers in the tourism sector, which includes hotels, attractions, food, and beverage companies and travel agencies. Guam provided, prior to the pandemic, an excellent career path for our people. Local executives were routinely placed in good jobs with great opportunity. These opportunities can be assured if we can help the industry recover. To meet these challenges, the businesses that have survived through the pandemic need resources. The LEAP program has been instrumental in supporting small businesses in our community, providing them with the necessary funding to keep expenses such as rent, utilities, and payroll. The financial assistance has allowed small businesses to weather the storm of the pandemic, preventing layoffs and keeping our local businesses afloat. Additional assistance can help them prepare to be competitive as the industry recovers. By providing financial resources to help cover expenses, small businesses can invest in their operations, take on new projects, and hire more workers, contributing to the recovery of the industry and paying taxes that were lost from the sector during the pandemic. In addition to my written testimony, I would also like to add that, just recently, some businesses have approached and have also shown their concern that sometimes it is not just monetary support that they need. They are suffering from, as someone earlier has mentioned, in regards to rising utilities, rising, you know, everything, right? The cost of things living in Guam has increased. And so some of these businesses, such as bus companies, sometimes they have work that comes in, but they cannot offer their service. And the reason is because they are not closed, is because they cannot get their drivers to drive the buses. They are having issues where they are going out to try to find new drivers, but they do not have the B license that are required to drive the buses. Now, when they try to encourage people to get these B licenses, the younger generations on the island are not willing to go out, and they are not motivated to go out and try to learn how to drive bigger buses and to get the B license to drive these big buses. So, you know, besides, you know, going forward, we may also, I ask you that, you know, please consider programs within the government agencies that may either waive and/or create grants that will help businesses to create programs that will allow our younger generations to seek these experiences or become the future drivers and/or the service people that will service our tourists in the future. So in closing, I urge the legislature to extend the LEAP program, which had been a vital source of the support of our small businesses during these challenging times. The LEAP program is an investment to rebuild jobs, increase the tax base, and to help small locally owned businesses rebuild, making sure that our people benefit and contribute to the growth and sustainability of our tourism industry and our local economy. Thank you. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Bill. I'd ask my colleagues if they would like to ask questions. I'll start with Senator Roy, and then we'll work this way. Senator Roy. Senator Barnett?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I would just ask, because it does look like we're going to do one of these leaps here. My money would be on Senator St. Augustine's LEAP measure. But can you just provide the committee with examples of what LEAP grants are spent on? LEAP awards, I mean?
Maybe Ed, you can bring that.
I can explain, but you may want to hear it directly from the beneficiaries. I think it would be better to hear it from the beneficiaries.
Yeah, totally.
Thank you, Senator. So, the original LEAP program was based the same as paycheck protection, where sixty percent needed to be spent on labor and forty percent could be spent on other allocable costs like power, rent, insurance. Now, I believe this round, the proposal, is that the expenditure on labor is going to be increased to seventy or seventy-five percent. So, for my company, we received LEAP for all of our businesses in the first round, and we spent ninety-three percent of it on labor. That was just how we chose to allocate it at that time. And I think this time around, we would most likely do the same thing. It's just allocate it to labor, because it is an employment protection program, you know, and that's, employment is tricky, you know? If those dominoes start to fall, it could create a pretty serious problem. So we just want to keep people working at the moment. There's no real way to make a profit in the restaurant industry at the moment, but I think we're close enough to it now that, you know, we can look forward to the future a little bit.
Can you elaborate just a little more on what do you mean by spending it on labor? Is it relative to underemployment? Or do you kind of fill the gaps with maybe some employees who aren't making the forty a week or the eighty per pay period?
The purpose of that was to spend it on people that are employed by our businesses. So anybody who was current and anyone knew that we would need to hire. So there are rules around the type of employment that it can be spent on, so we're not permitted to pay a bonus to any salary personnel, and that's more than fair. And I don't remember every single rule, but there were some guidelines and stipulations around how it was to be used, but it did not stipulate whether the individuals be full-time or part-time, I believe, but Ed might know.
Yes, thank you, Senator. I can add to that. We left it very broad for the business. However, they must spend sixty percent of the award on payroll and eligible payroll expenses, whether they are part-time or full-time. We left that to the business because each business is different. And, I mean, you mentioned maybe this new program might be up to seventy percent. We haven't had any real discussion on whether we want to increase that measure. Over half of our LEAP recipients have already requested for forgiveness, and we're going through the process of determining how much of what they spent is based on payroll or other eligible expenses like utilities and rent, which we understand that those are very important costs, too. And they had one year to expend it, but we kept it very broad for the business to determine that. But yes, he's right. There are no bonuses. There are no perks flying off island or anything. You have to give us your SW two, and we're going to do our due diligence to make sure that the number of employees that you said you were going to, and they had to commit to a number of employees, the number of employees you committed to in the application process, that stays the same. It can fluctuate because things happen over the course of the year, but this whole program, the LEAP program, was based on hiring or bringing back employees or maintaining the employees you currently have.
Is there a difference of opinion with the potential recipients of LEAP awards as to whether or not the cost of labor should be adjusted upwards or downwards? The percentage to be spent on labor? Because I've just heard different things in meeting with different business people, right?
Yeah, I'm not sure where that came from, so I'm not sure.
I was just kind of speaking off the top of my head there about some discussions I've had with.
We're looking at maintaining at least sixty percent. I mean, there are other expenses, eligible expenses out there, but we're looking at maintaining sixty percent.
Could you just, maybe generally, but describe the types of businesses that have received LEAP awards? Because I know we have the Applebee's, right? But then, you know, we also have the Grill Sergeants that need help.
It might be easier to explain who is not eligible.
Okay.
That's a shorter list. Any passive income establishment, landlords, like was mentioned, you'd have to be economic activity generating with employees. So landlords, we also had shell companies, parent companies without employees and so forth. Those, they're very few that are not, that were not eligible. And then you had those businesses who generated in excess of revenues identified in the North American Industry Code Standards. We didn't have a benchmark, so we used that. If you had generated in excess revenue based on your industry, you would be not eligible. And it could also be based on the number of employees. But nobody was not eligible based on employees. A few may have been on the revenue. It's just the type of business they are.
Just because I've been, you know, ahead of the hearing, I've been getting a lot of concerns from, what about like mom and pop stores? Do you think that they have suffered enough to be eligible?
Absolutely. And we had a lot of mom and pop stores applying. They employ people, too. They were ineligible, but we did have a minimum threshold of ten thousand dollars. You had to be doing at least ten thousand dollars a year to qualify for this program. And then initially, when LEAP came out, we were looking at a minimum of five employees, but through stakeholder meetings, we took that down to one. You're self-employed, you employ yourself. So we had no threshold of number of employees, but the number of employees determined the maximum grant amount or award amount you can get. So it's pretty complex, but it was all based on their number of employees and the GRTs or BBTs were submitted, comparing pre-pandemic and a period after pandemic. So those are the major, and the level of business interruption comparing the two. So there was a number of factors involved. And we're going to maintain that, but because the funding is significantly less than the sixty million dollars we had in LEAP, we just can't continue to pay all those high benefits. You're going to wipe it out real fast.
I know the unemployment numbers are in there, very, a little too good, some might say, but is underemployment a big issue with you guys?
What do you mean, underemployed? I don't want underemployed for a business?
Yeah, yeah, for the businesses.
Well, they're going to submit their number of employees. We've seen businesses improving. We constantly evaluate, we ask for additional BBT filings, although we don't have a grant going on right now, just to measure. And I think we did a poll of maybe forty percent. So we did see an uptick of employees coming back. We have seen an uptick of revenue, too. So we anticipate the number of eligible businesses for LEAP is going to go down maybe twenty percent. But yeah, I mean, you have to have employment. And we haven't determined whether we're going to require a minimum number of employees. I mean, we thought we were going to do that in LEAP, but through stakeholder meetings, we took it out. So we're still going to have stakeholder meetings.
Mr. Hart, I had a question for you. Where are you getting your bacon? Is that wholesale?
Yeah, that's wholesale.
Yeah, because, man, I was like, man, four dollars a bacon. I'm paying like, we're paying like nine, ten dollars out here.
We buy through distribution networks associated.
I was like, dude, where, is that bacon? Is the brand Barass?
Yeah, is that the thick cut? Is it thick?
We can talk later.
Okay. Yeah, because, you know, we're, I don't know who said rising everything. I think that was, yeah, rising everything, you're right. And so we're in this position where, I mean, we heard how badly the business community is suffering, and, you know, we're just in this situation where we're trying to like bring everybody up from the business community to, obviously, there's a big conversation right now with this body and the government workers, right? So we hear you, and, you know, I mean, I think that's evidenced by just a plethora of bills, I mean, not one, not two, but three. It's almost like we're falling over each other to try and get you guys the assistance that you need. So, I mean, it's going to happen. It's just a question of which one of these is going to happen. And again, my money's on the chairman's bill, so thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Senator Barnett. Madam Speaker, if you have any questions for the panel?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you to the panel for testifying and for all of you who are here today. So for GIDA, the last program you said had a minimum of sixty percent spent on labor, forty percent on utilities, insurance, other things, eligibles, and no minimum employees?
No.
Okay, so, but now you're considering the same percentages for the Okay, so, but now you're considering the same percentages for the use of the money and perhaps a minimum of 20 employees?
No.
Or you're not going to?
We're not going to, we're not going to raise the minimum number. But we are going to lower the maximum amount of the award because the funding is less. So the maximum amount on the LEAP was $300,000 for the businesses that had five or more employees. And for less than five employees was $50,000.
Okay, so, did you deny anyone last time?
There were ineligible businesses. I can, I can explain because I didn't get a chance to finish what I was going to say. The list of ineligible businesses are government or private hospitals, basically, any national type business that's out of, that's not operating in Guam, like the Home Depot, Ross, those that don't pay any income taxes on Guam. Basically, the annual gross revenues of less than $10,000. Any childcare assistance program, because we were launching a childcare assistance program. Businesses that commence business after July 1st, 20, after the pandemic started. So we didn't, you had to be in business pre-pandemic. Nonprofit organizations, because we already have grant programs for nonprofits. And businesses that have permanently closed their doors. So we had businesses come in that after they permanently closed. And so we look at that and they would ask for reconsideration and we may go through that process.
So do you expect that another round of LEAP is going to help the same people or different people?
We believe it's going to save many of the same people we have because just doing our regular assessment, 80% of them are still experiencing the business interruption, high levels of business interruption.
And do you think you had a good turnout or where there is a lot of businesses that you think might have been eligible but just did not apply in time?
The LEAP was the, I think, the fourth or fifth program we ran. We ran a pandemic assistance grant, then we did a pandemic assistance grant 2021. So it was out there already that GITA was running these grant programs. So we, and we also reached out to as many businesses as we possibly could. We believe the businesses that applied under LEAP, they're going to reapply. Most, about 80, 70 to 80% will reapply. And we just don't know whether, what their level of business interruption is. And we're not clear what level we want to implement. There were two levels of business interruptions under LEAP. Yet we, for those businesses that were impacted by public health vaccination mandate, where you need to have your employees vaccinated, we lowered the business interruption to 20%, which is really significant if you were to ask any of the businesses here. But those who were not mandated or guided by public health mandate, the business interruption was 50%. Now, we saw under our initial pandemic assistance grant, there was over 2,300 awards. Under the LEAP, there was 930 some awards. So we dropped significantly. Now, there's reasons for that. Some of them were doing better than they were in the past, and some of them went out of business. But we also had businesses where ineligible because they started business during the pandemic, and you had to be in business prior to pandemic. So we believe that we're not going to see the same level of number of applications applying that did, that applied during the LEAP. We think it's going to be significantly lower, maybe 30, 30%, 20 to 30% lower.
Why is that again?
Some businesses are doing better now than they were back then.
They're doing better?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
And we have that, some of those numbers.
Okay, and so how many people or businesses do you think we can help with this amount?
We're forecasting anyways between 300 to 500.
300 to 500? All right, and just back to your criteria that they use it for employees. If any of you, is there any, I don't know. Can you convince us, I guess, of the benefit to the employees as doing it this way as opposed to just us using this money to give it directly to employees?
If I may, you can give somebody fish and they will eat for the day. But if you give them the fishing pole, they can fish for life. I, I look at myself as a platform where my team members, every single day, and I'll tell, let me go answer a question you asked earlier, how do we use the money? Especially when we're down in business, we took that money, we make sure we try to make them whole. But we were productive, right? Today, we don't have any tours in the afternoon. But my guys, if I wasn't called to this hearing today, I would be out there on the farm right now planting watermelon with them because they needed hours to make, take care of their family. I think that it's great that the government is giving also direct assistance to our people. The GPA bills that you've heard about earlier? My God, yeah, that's a really big help. But long-term, I want to take care of my people, long-term. And giving them a direct assistance, unless you're going to give them direct assistance for life, that's a different story. But I think my business now is over 30 some years old, and I have people that are with, have been with me for over 30 some years. I mean, I came in later, but they've been there with that business. And I want to make sure that not just them, but now some of their children work for us. And I think we, giving it to us to be able to provide livelihoods for people beyond the endemic, right? And give them a future in recovering our economy. I mean, that's why I think helping the small businesses help our people. Because at the end of the day, we have no problem of giving 80% to wages and for salaries and whatever, right? I mean, that's what we did as well. Because we need to keep them. And go back to the experience that we deliver to guests that come from abroad. It's been really difficult because many of the other businesses around us have closed. And so taking care of our people is now reflected in our TripAdvisor comments, right? They experience culture, they experience this, they experience our people. But I can't, I can't make them give a great experience if I can't take care of them first. And I think that's, you know, where we're coming.
If Dave don't get that money, I'm going to quit. A true fact, because, you know, $2 a head, that started eight years ago. In 2019, I was making $36,000 a month. For the past three years, for the past two years, for the past year, I'm making less than $1,000 a month. But why am I sticking on that? Because Dave is fighting for me. I could have quit with him and say, I quit. But the 48 kids that were there yesterday, that's what we shared. That's our culture. We share that down there in the valley. And I will continue to do that. But if you, Dave gets assisted and the other businesses get assisted and I get assisted, I can hire someone to be pulling the carbo instead of me doing it. But I can hire because I cannot even pay myself because Dave cannot pay me. But if you give it to Dave, maybe I can get a pay raise. Because, you know, I pay, I pay gas out here. I pay power bill, I pay, and it's ridiculous that everything goes up except my pay. And I'm, you know, I look at Dave and he look at me and say, okay, thank you. I like to table my time so that others can testify. Thank you again very much.
That's my next question. Was any of the money for, for labor used to give pay raises?
Madam Speaker, no.
Let me, I can add to that too. GITA has a very strict compliance on the use of funds. We've seen already 63% of the LEAP loan recipients request for forgiveness. And we have a very strict process in terms of ensuring that the money was used at least to 60% for payroll or eligible payroll expenses. And we have with me is our Compliance Assistant Manager, John Snickless here. He's a tough guy. He makes sure, and he won't pass anybody unless they dot all the i's and cross all the t's. And this, since this is federal money authorized by Governor Lou, we need to make sure we adhere to our SOP on that. Now, there have been businesses requesting to you to make, I think, Dave, you were saying, make employees pay whole. They may have been paid 40, 50, 20 hours, 30 hours a week to get them back to 80 hours. They would have done that. And maybe there were, there were incremental pay raises that they were required to get, you know, for someone's annual review. But we find that far and few. Most of the money that we've seen so far is just to restore, bring back employees or just to maintain that employee at a current level.
Okay, and how many, you have a number of employees that have been affected or supposedly impacted by this, right?
Based on the number of loans, the LEAP, there was a grant portion and a loan portion. And the loan portion, that is where we were very strict and you had to use 60% of the eligible award on payroll, payroll expenses. The total number of employees in that category was 5,512. Now, not all the companies have applied for forgiveness already, but that was the total number of employees at that static period of time when the application, when they applied. Those that were not loan recipients, they're just straight up grants because they had less than five employees. That was 1,315 employees.
Less than, because they were less than five?
Yes.
And those businesses that had less than five, they were eligible for this grant?
They were still, they were eligible for a grant up to $50,000, but they still had to show business interruption.
Okay, and can you just explain in the new program, how will you measure impact? It just going to be the same way?
First and foremost, the business interruption that a business, we would be expecting possibly maybe a little higher, but we would discount it for inflation. I mean, inflation's at anywhere between 10, 10 to 12%. We were looking at how we, if we go to a higher business interruption, do we discount it to maybe 50%? Because we were looking at 60%. We're still playing with the numbers based on some of the data we have. But there's no question about it. It's going to be at least 40 to 50% in business interruption comparing BBTs of pre-COVID and some period during COVID.
Okay, so you use the BPT?
Yes, the only measure we have right now, and it's verifiable.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Senator Blas?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Ladies and gentlemen, thank you very much for being here, and I appreciate the testimony. I want to go a little bit more to the urgency of the program, okay? Is there anybody can provide me in this far, and then Richard, thank you. I remember we had this conversation back in, was it December? Yeah?
November, yes.
November? I guess I want to emphasize in as far as the importance of this. What does it mean with regard to timeframe? I mean, how quickly do we need this money? You know, or what kind of, you know, what are the ramifications, the consequences if this doesn't happen?
I, I think that it's urgent for the restaurant industry as a whole. I think there's some level of urgency there. Restaurant food service, however you want to call it. But the end result without it would be loss of jobs. You know, I think within, you know, in the next 60 to 90 days.
Yeah, if I may, as well, the sense of urgency is yesterday, actually. You know, one of the challenges we are experiencing in delivering a Guam experience that was, was there pre-pandemic is that we've had suffered significantly internally as businesses that are supposed to deliver the experience. And I have one of my colleagues, Steve Casperbar, who's going to testify after, can speak even more to that. But we need to prepare. We are trying to prepare to deliver, again, that great experience that Guam offered to our guests from our source markets. And we've got to remember as well, we are not in our own little world doing this just with those source markets. There are so much competition out there. We're facing not just, you know, Okinawa, which many of the Japanese guests are going now. We're now facing global competition, whether it's Hawaii or Southeast Asia. And then on top of that, we're facing issues such as the devaluation of the currencies against, against the dollar. And so it makes us more expensive. And I will tell you, GTTA along with GHRA and others actually put a program together, not just to wait for the recovery of the dollar, but try to give greater value for our guests to choose Guam. We put together the Guam Big Wave Campaign, where over 50 some businesses came in and offered across the board. I know the restaurants offered a 20% discount if you would come in and participate in this program. The hotels were giving $25 per day hotel credits. Our, us attractions were giving 20, 30% off of whatever, just so that we could fight the devaluation of the Japanese yen or the Korean won against the dollar. So we as, we wanted to show as well that we were not sitting on our laurels just waiting for handouts necessarily. We call it handups from the legislature. But we were trying as well to participate and put our share in to try to help the tourism industry recover. And that's kind of the stuff that we continue to do. We're just evaluating now to extend that program because of the announcement of Japan extending its domestic travel incentives for their people.
Thank you. You know, Mr. Komachi, recognizing as far as the urgency, you know, of these businesses, I'm sure that if we can provide this, as yesterday, you know, we can do this. But the reality of this, how long would it take GITA to stand up a program that can continue, that can assist them?
We've been working on a program. It all depends on the funding amount. I mean, we have, we have good models we can use already. I mean, we can follow the LEAP, but not, not patterned. It's going to be a combination of our LEAP and our pandemic assistance grant. So we have, we can roll something out within a couple of weeks if necessary.
Well, I got a great idea. We can introduce all three bills, pass them, put them on the governor's desk, and she can sign all three of them. And there you go, there's your money.
Well, we still got to go before our board too to let them know what we're doing.
I understand that. Okay, well, thank you very much. Thank you very much, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Senator Blas. Senator Fisher, do you have anything you'd like to ask the panel?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. I guess I'll address the question to the Chamber of Commerce then, ma'am. The LEAP program is, of course, designed to help businesses through this rough economic time. There is also a proposal before the legislature to raise the minimum wage. Do you have an opinion on perhaps an intersection between these two concepts of the LEAP loan program and then at the same time, we raise the minimum wage? What if any, I know you may have an opinion on that.
I certainly do, sir.
Pardon me, can I just interject real quick? To my colleague Senator Fisher, there's no current bill in any draft form in our legislative body at this time, just to point your mainness. I know we're going to have a roundtable. It was unfortunately rescheduled due to our recession. Again, I invite each and every one of you guys to come and attend the roundtable so that we can clarify our standards. Obviously, it is my dream and my endeavor to raise the minimum wage to $15, but we're currently facing an economic crisis. So I hear you guys. I'm not trying to hang you guys, okay? Thank you. Just wanted to make sure I pointed that out.
Thank you, Senator. Ma'am, would you like me to repeat the question or?
No, it's okay. Thank you. Yes, it is the opinion of the Chamber of Commerce that the minimum wage should be dictated by market and not by the government. The minimum wage is not a living wage. The minimum wage is a starting wage. And as we have heard from our businesses here, increasing the minimum wage would be absolutely devastating. It would close businesses that are trying to survive right now. If you walked into a restaurant, and I'm sure all of us have had that opportunity, we've had to wait because maybe there's maybe one or two servers, right? And they're so nice and there's, you know, just they have the half a day spirit. And then they'll tell you, you know, on the menu today, we don't have whatever that is, right? We don't have lettuce, we don't have, you know. Or you order something and you'll say, oh, you know, we ran out of, right? So that is the, you know, the current situation that we're living in today. And it's not, you know, the fault of any of our businesses. They are trying to do their best, right? But that is the reality of what we're living in. So the Chamber, you know, as many on the body know, has maintained that, again, the minimum wage is not a living wage. Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much, ma'am. Would anybody else on the panel like to weigh in on that issue? Okay, yes, sir, Mr. Tidinko?
Yeah, thank you, Senator. I, I have one person who started a month and a half ago on minimum wage, but they go through a three-month evaluation process, and then we move them up there. And I, I would love to come to the roundtable discussion, right? About, because we want to give the best for our people, but we also have to figure out how to do that and make it meaningful to everybody so that we all survive. There are some discussions about, you know, how do we do it? And again, I don't have an answer here. But I will say that there is, there should be a discussion because, again, at the end of the day, I'm just.
a discussion because, again, at the end of the day, I'm just speaking for our company. We expect our people to give a great experience, but how can I expect them to give a great experience if I can't take care of them? And that's kind of the bottom line. I don't want to pit myself against them because I don't want to give them a better wage, geez, I would always love to do that. But we also have to figure out what is the best solution to make sure that we can take care of everyone on all sides and create a win-win. And, and I know it's difficult, particularly in these times, but that discussion still needs to happen because this too shall pass, right? And we need to figure out a way that we can take care of our people.
Thank you, sir. This question is for GIDEA. Mr. Camacho, if there were a hike in the minimum wage, would you expect that to produce more pressure on the LEAP program?
Absolutely, because it would increase the cost of the business. So consequently, this would be more important for them. Because if you see their costs going up for payroll, payroll expenses, this LEAP is designed to help them offset some of that cost so they can use whatever they use for payroll expenses for other eligible expenses to run their business, but absolutely.
Is it conceivable, sir, that a raise, a rise in the minimum wage?
Objection, Mr. Chair. Is this, is this the minimum wage roundtable?
No, no, it's not, so.
Okay, I'm just checking.
Senator Fisher, let's stick to the.
Yes, sir, this question is directed directly at the LEAP program. Sir, do you think, as to the LEAP program, I want to address Senator Burnett's concern, as to the LEAP program, in the event there were a rise, a raise in the minimum wage, do you think that you might have to come back to us and ask for more money to refund or recharge the LEAP program?
In most of our programs, there's been more requests than funding available. That's why we limit the timeline to try to get everybody in as quick as possible. Conceivably, that could happen if, if it goes up. When you take an employee who's earning $10 an hour and you go, well, I don't want to go to the payroll, but basically, it could, it could possibly result in that.
Thank you, sir, and thank you, Mr. Chair. I don't have any other questions.
Thank you, Senator Fisher. Thank you for the panel for being here, and we'll call the next group. And for some of you may want to hang around so that at the end you hear other comments made by the colleagues, okay? I mean, go ahead and step away, Ed, just step away because the next three, I think they already asked you a question, but I just want to make sure that some of you still around when we do the closing of the bills, okay?
I have my assistant manager here, he could jump in too.
All right, Ed, thank you, Ed. We have Steve Casperbauer here, we have Jerry, where's Jerry at? Jerry's there, and then we got Jude. Okay, so we have you three, and that's, and that's the remaining. Steve, we'll begin with you. So go for it, go for it, Steve. Oh, you have one more? Oh, we have Monty? Okay, Monty, just come up and have a seat. I was waiting for you to sign in. He likes to just walk in and just join the crowd, but go ahead, have a seat, Mont. Okay, go for it, Steve.
Thank you very much. Good afternoon, Madam Speaker and Senators. My name is Steve Casperbauer, representing the option tour industry, which is basically the main attraction for the attractions, in a sense. You know, if you're a tourist and you're coming to Guam, usually from our two main markets, Korea and Japan, they have many more hotels that are better facilitated and have more amenities than Guam. They have more shops and stores than we have on Guam, but they don't have any beaches and they don't have the marine sports attraction. So the amenities of the different classes of hotels and shopping, they match the economic status of those who come, but they all come as equals when it comes to enjoying the nature of Guam. When we look at arrivals, sometimes we group too many things into it. For example, military arrivals for these big exercises, or transit, or even our own local travel, that's not really the issue. Way back in the 93 to like 97, when we had BRAC, we saw that we lost one leg of the economic stool. And it was crushing to Guam, we lost a lot of people. But luckily, at that time, the Japanese tourism industry and the Korean industry was able to bolster the economy and pull us through. This is the first time, though, that tourism is needing to have someone else bill it out at this time. For our business, we have been open and then kind of closed, and then working to stay open, et cetera. There are specialized stores, we specialize, not on purpose, but mainly with the Japanese market. If you want to work with the Korean market, there is a lot more intensity in that and volatility, and you have to be a real special, specialized group like we are with the Japanese. We do get a lot of Koreans too, but I'm just going to mention this is that when I was asked by one of the medias about how tourism has gone up, I said, I would like to rephrase it as how far we are from where we were. So rather than saying it went up 20%, I want to state it's down 70%. And who can work with that? Same for the Koreans. And what has happened in Japan, I was there last September when they were going to open up, but when they mentioned they were going to open up, they also had a stay-in-Japan program where they gave the residents a couple thousand dollars a month. It was a smart program because it wasn't cash, it was electronic vouchers that you meet at the register for service activities. So hotel, travel, dining, and they really kept that economy in Japan. I remember in 1992, the governor of Okinawa came to Lupang Beach Club in Guam to look at tourism attractions because we were out, outpacing Okinawa 10 to 1 on Japanese mainland tourists. Because of the pandemic, I think the, the number hit almost $10 million, uh, 10 million travelers from mainland Japan to Okinawa. And so there, they are, have a program that keeps them in Japan, keeps their economy going. It's nothing against Guam, but they have a longer pace in their schedule. The Koreans, they're coming, but still, it's the same thing, as you heard, we're down 70%. Okay? And so if you lost 70% of your payroll, your income, you really can't hold on very much longer. So we want to thank you all for the support in the past, and here's what I'm here to represent on our side is, the dollar, should, should we be awarded a chance to have another LEAP, that same dollar that you give us will probably be the equal value of 70 cents compared to before. That's how bad it's gotten since the last LEAP was administered, and it continues to seem to go up. We are also having to have big investments in retraining. Why is that? Not many people wanted to say, we'll wait three years or two years to have 40 hours. Many of our people that worked for decades in this industry have moved to the States or have moved on to the military base. As you know, the military minimum wage on a federal installation is $15 an hour. So we're also having to hedge in the future for even hotels and services where, you know, you've worked for 13 years and you're making $13 an hour, the minimum wage was 950 or something like that, or $14 an hour. And grandma comes home in a three-generation family and her grandson at 16-years-old says, I got a job, where at? McDonald's, how much you going to make? And he says, I make 15 on the McDonald's on the base, which is going to create issues in our hotel industry as people just want to jump over the fence. So we have a lot of volatility, and it's going to take a lot of shifting. And so those businesses that are in our category don't have certainty as we do with, as we can see, the government has given a lot of certainty to its employees with the proposed increase in wages and with everything that's going on, on the base, it's the same way. And so maybe we're looking at a shot for those industries that are on the broken leg of the three-legged stool, to have us to consider what we have on the table, which we really appreciate, but also to keep track of it in the, in the future. One of the hardest things are keeping our professionals, accountants. You know, those are people that are very risk adverse, right? And we have seen an exodus of professionals going to the States. We've seen an exodus of our workers that have been trained over the last 30 years that came from Micronesia, very humble, especially in our industry for outdoor sports and attractions. They can stand the heat for 12 hours, they have the best character and patience, and they have the best training. When you look at these folks out there, some of them have maybe $20,000 in training over the year. We have hazmat, we have CPR, we have captain's license training, we have all these things. Well, many of those folks too have gone, but you know where they went to? Meatpacking plants. Probably a thousand of them went for meatpacking plants, and they're not coming back. So we've lost a core, and we need your help to navigate. We don't know exactly what the answer is except to unite and move forward and tackle these issues. And so I think we, we come in solidarity that we're so fortunate on Guam that we do have a military economy that's really bolstering, but it's also creating a super pressurized competition for what we can charge our tourists that have had only, Japan's inflation was only 2.5% last year, 2.5. Korea was 4.5. And when they come, they're looking and saying, wow, it's kind of expensive. I can go to Okinawa, I can go to Vietnam or Thailand, and we, we need to have time to adjust. So I know that there's three bills there, and if they may be different, that might be three $20 million subsidies, just kidding, because I don't know how you can merge it or whatever else, but you know, yeah, let's, let's get ready to make sure that all of the investment that we have, you know, it's, it's, it's going on the base, that's going to keep going for a long time. But look at the investment down there in Tumen, but also look at the investment in the, in the people that now we have to bring in. I never thought there would be a day where we would have to consider getting visas to bring in entry-level employees, because that's how empty this place is. And it takes time to get them to an area, a stage where we can have that highest level of customer satisfaction and safety. So I want to thank you. I think most everything was said in there, I just wanted to put a little angle to tell you how important it is because tourism is a want, not a need. Okay? And so that's from the tourist person, but for Guam, it's a need. It's a big need. And if we don't match that need correctly, we have a very nice sister island called Saipan down the road, they don't have a military buildup, they don't necessarily have these issues, and they can move a lot faster. Okay? And good for them, through the positioning, but bad for us if we don't have more resources than we've ever had that we can share with the tourism industry to get everybody back onto smooth running engine. Thank you for your time and thank you for your support in the past. Also want to thank GIDEA and, and those who have helped us and, you know, with the governor's office, everybody's been Team Guam, but I think there's an appearance on the outside that things are looking bright, but that's because traffic is too much, not just kidding, but there's nothing other. Thank you, Senator.
All right, Jerry?
Yes. Hafede, good afternoon. Thanks to the committee for this opportunity to speak and outline our needs. Thank you also to the senators, the governor, and GED for recognizing our plight in the past and providing funds to keep us afloat. My name is Jerry Pastonas, I am the operations manager for nine casual dining restaurants, all of which have struggled mightily for three years. One of those restaurants have been committed for completion during COVID, so I won't include that in our discussion here. Of the other eight, we had to close five temporarily, and had, and had we not received the LEAP one financial assistance from the government, we would certainly have had to close at least that many permanently, causing multiple bankruptcies and over 200 lost jobs. For that help, we are obviously very grateful. Now we are hoping, hopefully approaching the end of our worst troubles, so we are humbly asking for the last assistance to carry us for the final six to nine months. Three of our pre-COVID eight restaurants have a mixed clientele, so we have received various, varying degrees of support from our local patrons as well as some military. But the other five, which is Ichri Grill, Little Picas, and three of our beach and shrimp restaurants, are 65 to 95% dependent on tourists. No business can survive on less than 50% of its designated sales volume for an extended period. Those five need help to survive. At our height, we had almost 500 employees, and at our lowest point, we only managed to keep up to 200, which was extremely expensive and way beyond the economic sense. Today, we are back to about 300, 350 employees and are hoping to get back to our full strength before the end of this year, but we need help. As everyone has experienced, the hyper-COVID caused inflation has spiraled our cost of goods, utilities, labor, and general supplies. We have recently been able to be, to begin catching up by starting to match our menu prices to relieve this stress area. Meanwhile, increasing Korean visitor traffic estimated to now be about 50% pre-COVID numbers has moderated our losses, and we're optimistic that some Japanese tourist traffic will soon start to have an impact. It's our understanding that the Japanese domestic travel incentive program will end on March 31st, the, the end of this, of their fiscal year, and at that time, we're hopeful that the increased United Airlines and Japan airline flight frequencies will aid a pent-up desire by the Japanese to travel and, and will reap the rewards. But just to update, as, as Mr. Steve has said, also, this Japan domestic travel has been moved to, now extended to the end of the summers or during the summertime, so unfortunately. This combination of events, caused to pricey parity and increasing tourist numbers, will take time to have the needed impact, and that's why we need financial help to bridge the gap until the tourist business will support us and, and prices increase, increases moderate. In the meantime, each store experiences losses of many thousands of dollars each month, an amount that we cannot continue to absorb. We therefore urgently request your assistance to reach self-sufficiency again. And thank you all very much for the opportunity to provide some informational background on our current restaurant situation. Thank you.
Thank you, Jerry. Jude? And to recognize the gentleman down here, that's Grill Sergeant, you just didn't check in to, to speak, but you're good. After Monty, it'll be you, okay? Go ahead, Jude.
Hafede, Senators, Chairperson, thank you for having us here today. I'd like to thank everyone for allowing us to even talk about proposing these, this second round of LEAP. And please bear with me today, I really didn't know I was going to be here, and I know this schedule kind of changed, but once I heard it was, what it was about, I think it'd be interesting to hear kind of my perspective. So my name is Jude Diaz, I'm the HR Director for International Dining Concepts, so this is my colleague for our nine different restaurants mainly located down in Tumen. I think I could speak for almost all my colleagues in the HR or human resources community that the negative effects of the pandemic on jobs and ultimately the livelihoods of our employees has been one of the worst experiences in the HR field. From furloughing or laying off employees due to our restaurant's closures and not being able to promise them their jobs back, to bringing back employees, but then again, having to furlough them because of multiple surges of COVID-19. But I don't speak for myself, I empathize and speak for all those that have received the news of losing their jobs and having to share that news with their spouse and/or families. However, it was programs like the PPP, ERC, and of course, the LEAP program that allowed our businesses to reopen, provide those jobs back, and more importantly, give our team members some sign of hope for their future. I'm sitting here not just as the HR person, but as an employee of the community, of the company that genuinely wants to provide opportunities for our local community. 90% of our management team all begin in front, all began in frontline positions such as dishwashers, servers, cooks, et cetera, and it's because these programs such as LEAP that. And it's because these programs such as LEAP that allowed us to get our doors back open and give us a kickstart and provide these opportunities back again. And so here we are today, thankfully proposing another round of LEAP. And as you can see, there's definitely been a small surge of tourism, an occasional rush of the military market, which has been such a beautiful thing to see so many foreigners walking our Tumon streets and enjoying our beaches. However, there's just no consistency with these markets. One week there'll be heavy with tourists and military traffic, and then the next week there'll be half of that population. Because of this, we can't sustain or maintain a consistent staff count. We can't overstaff one week and then reduce hours the next. Ultimately, it's not fair for the employees and their livelihoods. So what happens is they'll either leave our company or they'll have to find a second or third job just to have some type of consistency to support their weekly and or monthly financial obligations. We have made drastic changes with our wages and benefits in our company, as most of other employers as well. All the while, cost of goods and inflation has dramatically risen simultaneously. Should a second round of LEAP get approved, this will allow our employees and future employees to not only have a job, but be able to go home to their families confident that they'll return back tomorrow. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Jude. Monty, you're it, and then Derek will follow and close it.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and greetings to all the senators. My name is Monty Mesa, and I'm here in support of the three measures that are being proposed to support our local businesses. Just for the record, as a landlord for both GPO and Tumon Sands Plaza, we are not qualified to even apply for the LEAP, the first LEAP or the second LEAP. However, though, I'm here to advocate for our tenants, our local tenants especially, that are continuing to have this difficulty. As landlords, we have worked with our tenants, especially the ones that are continuing, and we know that they still have the capacity over this hump that we're hoping to come soon with our Japanese visitors returning. We're glad to hear that, you know, the Korean market has recovered over fifty percent, maybe at fifty-two percent now. But our Japanese has only recovered about twenty-five percent. So most of our local tenants, especially at Tumon Sands, and we appreciate all of you patronizing it. I see all of you there. Thank you very much. And the restaurants there, as well as the retail, most especially, have been impacted because of the slow return of our Japanese market. We're holding on to those local-owned businesses, even though they're they're representing luxury brands. But there are local companies that have the franchise for these brands. And they are holding on. Our or their sales performance is nowhere near what we used to get during pre-COVID. However, as landlords, we know the difficulties and we've worked with them because we know that once the visitors return, hopefully close to pre-COVID numbers, or at least back to twenty nineteen numbers. We know that they will continue to operate and continue to be successful as well. So we're asking, you know, three things here. One, of course, is just helping hand because we did not realize, of course, the length of the recovery to drag on this long. We were so happy with the first LEAP program that the legislature, as well as the governor, has put together. That has helped greatly. However, this continued longer than we had thought. And this additional supplemental, we hope will will take, this will be a bridge for most of our tenants. And we're hoping and based on the indications we've received currently, that, you know, there's some light at the end of the tunnel sooner than later, we hope. We're looking at this summer, especially as mentioned earlier with some of the speakers, you know, both Japan Airlines have started to get some bookings. They're not running daily, however, they're also managing their cost factor. And on those days that are they they're scheduled to return, it's because they've got now reservations above their breakpoint in terms of their load capacity or minimum load capacity that's required. So the airlines are are adjusting. We're glad that our hometown airline, United Airlines, formerly Continental, you know, are are also scheduling additional flights for this summer in anticipation that our Japanese market will recover as we anticipate. And therefore, with this bridge that we're asking for to hold on to, those tenants that we know will be able to survive and continue on once our visitor numbers are returning closer to twenty nineteen numbers. We've we've seen the spike, as noted earlier, with, you know, the return of our Korea market, that some have adjusted and have have recovered. There's a few more stores that are still needing help. Some of the other stores have recovered, and we're thankful for our local market to patronize our tenants there, both at GPO as well as the restaurants, especially down at Tumon Sands. We thank the local market for their patronates there because that helped them to continue operating. However, we still are missing, you know, our Japanese market that, of course, we we get a lot of support out of the hotels, but not all of them are operating and not all of them are in their full capacity in terms of visitor occupancy at the hotels. So the second thing that we're asking here for your support as well is, again, Gita has done a great job in facilitating the first LEAP program that you guys have put through and and passed for them to administer. And I think they they have the ability to adjust that from the previous program. Because today, yes, we've managed to keep most of the employees. We're fortunate in some of our local tenants that are continuing to operate now. They've held on to our local employees there with the help that you guys provided in the first LEAP. And we're moving on to, you know, another year, and we say maybe this is another bridge just for additional six months in hopes that our visitors start returning as we anticipate. And 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 we're working hard. I know GBB is working hard to try to get this thing going as well. The third thing I would like to again ask in terms of the three bills that are being proposed, and and I hope that, again, it ought to be considered. Please note that this is an investment. From a business standpoint, I look at it that that the money that you guys have approved earlier in the first LEAP was an investment. The trickle-down effect that went out to all the businesses to support those first and foremost, the employees to maintain. All that is is again circulating in our community. And you've already, I I can I can guarantee it already, that the LEAP that you first provided, the first twenty-five thousand that came from the general fund, has been paid back. How? It's 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 in the public news that the governor also mentioned, and the legislature have seen that the revenues of the GRT has gone up. And that's because our people that were able to be sustained during this LEAP, first LEAP issuance, helped to continue our economy moving forward. And again, we appreciate the 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 patronates of our local people on both our our shopping centers and all the other shopping centers that benefited as well. So these are the three things that, you know, I wanted to make sure that you all understand that this is an investment. And it'll have a trickle-down effect in returns to in return of all the taxes that the government continues to get. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Monty. Mr. Derek. Grill Sergeant, yes, sir.
Good afternoon, senators. Let me be brief. I guess I did always going to speak on behalf of the Valley of the Laddie. I I'm partnered with Dave Teddinko. I also have a business over at Chomor Village. How urgent and how important the bill will be to the locals is very important. Why? Because, you know, we're all about the culture and, you know, how can we promote culture if we don't have the funds? Am I right? Like Dave said, down at the valley, we, there's only so much we can do down there with with so little. I got two, I guess, two, two stores, two restaurants, the Chomor Village and down there. I also have to pay staff. Staff is very crucial right now because they have problems, they have things to do, and we're short. We cannot pay, we can't always pay them because, again, funds are really tight on our end. You know, I'm a retired veteran and still fighting, you know. I face a lot of obstacles just from my disability. And Senator Dwayne as well will vouch. So what I'm trying to say is, we need to come together as as a unit, as 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 owners, as small business, like small business. We need to come together and help the community with with with, how would I say, the the military, not the military, the funds. With our funds, we can, we cannot do our jobs. We cannot, we cannot have jobs for people that are trying to get jobs, and we don't even have the funds. We are really low as it is. We rely on tourists, yes, we do, but when I opened up, I had to rely on locals. There was no tourists, zero. So they said, I was even discouraged, they said, don't open your business. You're you're not going to do good. I said, no, they didn't know my plan. My plan was to free delivery, free delivery. Who who does that? Sorry. Up at Compadre's Mall, missing two chicken from a plate. I said, I'm going to bring you more chicken. That's how you get customer service. That's just the local way. We grew up with Roy Canata, Yumato style, southern southern hospitality. We always have to give, you know what I'm saying? And we, how can we spread the culture if there's there's no one to support, which is the tourists? We need, we need tourists, we need money, we need funds. I'm not saying we're all about the money, but we need money to survive and for our staff to survive. We almost, we almost closed up because we are picking out our pocket. The first LEAP, I didn't even qualify because I missed it. I opened up in twenty twenty twenty-one, February twenty twenty, already, I couldn't, I couldn't even get it. They said because of GRT, I'm like, you know, how can I survive? So my wife and I, we had to pull out of our pockets to survive. Now we're just weakling. So that's how important this bill is to us. We really need it to help help people and and not only ourselves, but to help our 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 staff. You know, I'm saying, how can we stay afloat if we don't have the funds? That's my my fight. Thank you.
Thank you. I will complete the testimony. Senator, do you have anything for the panel?
Keep up the good work. We're here for you, we're going to do our best. Keep toeing the line. We appreciate you guys and keep our tax dollars rolling.
Senator Barnett.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chair. Yes, obviously, we're going to pass one of these measures. So, yeah, the the support is definitely there. Just to Bo, you're right, you know, you're one of these businesses where we always, when you talk to the, and even see Dave and Uncle John, right? When we talk about what do the tourists want to see? Because we're not Hawaii, we're not, you know, right? We're not Timbuktu or wherever. We're Guam and we're Tomorrow, right? And we have our culture, our food, right? They never forget it. Everybody who comes here, you go on YouTube, you type in tomorrow food, there's rave reviews, right? So I just want to commend you also as a as a veteran-owned business. You know, and when we spoke last year, you you went out on a limb to start this business, right? But the Hugueny was good, the red rice champion, the pot roast. Yes. So, you know, of course, we want to support him. For me, you know, no offense to some of the bigger businesses, the franchises, the the companies that, you know, are running seven to ten restaurants. You know, we want to support you too. But for me, what it's all about is encouraging the smaller businesses and giving them the assistance that they need so that we encourage other people to take that step into entrepreneurship. And so again, Mr. Bo, thank you so much, and we're looking forward, looking forward to Len being over so I could eat that pot roast and that red rice. So, sidos masi.
Thank you, Senator Barnett. Madam Speaker, do you have anything for the panel that are here?
Just wanted to say excellent testimony. And so thank you very much. It's very helpful and I'm glad that we have been able as a government to assist the businesses and congratulations on making it this far. And that I hope we are right, that there's just a little bit longer to go and then everybody's back on some good ground, very solid. So sidos masi for your perseverance and resilience.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Senator Blas?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair.
And gentlemen, thank you very, very much. I mean, I think that, you know, sometimes they say they save the best for last and not to take anything away from you, okay? You know, you, great, great testimony from from the rest of you guys, but you know, thank you for bringing the humanistic. I I'd like to be able to ask Jude, can I get a copy of your testimony, please? Okay? That didn't sound last, that came from the heart and that came from, you know, the concern that you have in the profession that you have. Okay? And I really, really, really appreciate that, okay? Need that so that I can continue to argue for Joe's bill on the floor. Okay? So Steve, thank you very much. And thank you for bringing that other perspective, and I appreciate that too as well. Okay? That's why I enjoy this this panel. And yeah, come on, we can't stop the pot roast, but can't 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 stop that, okay? So thanks a lot. Thanks, guys.
Senator Fisher, you have anything you'd like to say to the panel?
Yes, I do, sir. It's actually a question of, you'll have to pardon my ignorance, these LEAP loans, are they secured? They're unsecured.
No, they're not secure.
Okay. And I think you just, I think you, sir, I think you may have already told us, Mr. Camacho. Are, is there any failure in repayments? And what's the rate?
We're seeing, well. John's our compliance manager here, so assistant manager, he's the one that fills all the requests for forgiveness.
Okay.
So maybe John can chime in on that.
The loan recipients have one year to use the funds for with disintended purposes. And we just, we just went, we're just looking at the the ones that just got their loans in January of last year. So now it's January this year, so they're submitting their applications for review. Then February will be February, sometime in March, March, sometime in April.
Okay, but I I'm not sure. Have you compiled statistics to determine how many of the borrowers have failed in their obligations?
There there are applicants already set for forgiveness, but we have not found anyone that are quote-unquote in default of the terms and conditions of receiving the loan funds at this point in time.
I don't know, maybe this is apples and oranges, but does that compare favorably to commercial loans?
Well, the the terms are is that if they don't use the funds according to the terms, then it'll it'll be actually remain a loan in which way they will start, they will have to start making payments.
Let me add to that a little. The program is pattern after the PPP. So basically, if there's a hundred thousand dollar loan awarded out there, sixty percent, at least up to, a minimum of sixty percent has to be used of the hundred thousand for payroll, payroll expenses. And the balance could be used for payroll or other eligible expenses. They have one year to to use the the funds received. Should that year come up and they don't use all the funds, they will have to explain to us why. If they didn't use the sixty percent, then we haven't had experience yet. If they did not use it, then we'd have to, there is a a look-back period of six months prior to see if we can help them out. The intent is to to get them all to use it, forgive, get the loan to be forgiven as a grant. That was the, that is the intent. And so far, we're seeing that hundred percent of what's coming in is going to, they're using it for the payroll, and some of them have used a hundred percent of it so far. We've had some big hotels in one or two months blow it out already. So there, it's going for payroll expenses to maintain those employees.
Thank you very much, sir. Mr. Chair, I don't have any other questions.
Thank you. There's, there's no one else to testify? Thank you for the panel that have arrived here. No one else to testify on? All three bills were all combined, okay? And I'd like to make a statement that it's not reference just to my bill, but any of the three bills. Is that as we're moving forward and what we're dealing with in session that we should be in at right now. But as we move forward on this, on whichever bill that comes up, because I'll be talking to the two authors, Senator Barnett and Senator Blas. And we'll come to terms of which one would be the best. And as we move forward, I would highly recommend that whatever surplus, if anything exists, the first priority would be for this. So in other words, if you see that, ah, they don't look like there's enough money, whatever. money, whatever's there, we start grabbing it. That would be my recommendation. So that means the priority would be for the program here, whichever one, whichever one we, all three of us agree on. Because it's it's for the businesses, for the people of Guam, period. But I'm like, we move forward. Because at the end of the day, GovGuam employees are going to be your customers, private companies are going to be employers. It doesn't matter. And exactly like you mentioned, Monty, everybody's out there. Just help everybody, and then we move on. Again, with that, we will continue to receive testimony for all three bills. And then we will move from there. And if you want to submit testimony, submit it to the mailroom, the Guam Legislature, or through email at senatorsjoestenaukstein@gmail.com. And again, I want to thank everyone for attending the hearing on Bill 75-37, Bill 61-37, and Bill 59-37. And that being said, this bill, all three bills have been heard, and the committee is now adjourned. Sido's Masi, the time now is 4:00, 4:10. Thank you. Please be safe. Take care.